Sam Campbell.
Here.
Bill Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Deapson?
Yeah.
Todd Hopp.
Here.
Okay, we have approval of agenda presented.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of two ten, two thousand and fourteen.
Thirteen.
Uh, is that, you should have got that written.
It should be fifteen. I thought it was going to be twenty.
You got fifteen. Okay, approval of minutes of two ten, two thousand and fourteen.
Thirteen.
Uh, is that, you should have got that written.
It should be fifteen. I thought it was going to be twenty.
You got fifteen. Oh, that's old. Well, I've got some, I'll load this one in. Read the back, it's still over there. Okay. Okay, approval of minutes for two thousand and two, second month, tenth day, two thousand and fifteen, and two thousand, second month, seventeen, two thousand and fifteen.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of two ten, two thousand and fifteen, and two seventeen, two thousand and fifteen, that mail to us.
Second? Second, got a second. Three and O. Okay, we all, we're going to do a little something. I'll be different for some people tonight. Uh, when we start into conversations, questions, and answers and stuff, we'd appreciate it if you've got to raise your hand and be acknowledged. And, uh, you'll have up to ten minutes to, I'm sure that's way too much, but that's what we've got tonight, my side of the meeting. We've got a lot of work to do. Thank you. Okay, we've got guests that I guess are here tonight. Mister. Noah? Okay, Masonic Lodge, fourteenth, East 38, nine and Dixman Park, on Saturday, April fourth. That's you, Todd?
Yes, that's me. We're just asking permission to use the park for that day.
Permission to use the park, that's the rest of the due. And that's on, uh, Saturday, April fourth.
April fourth.
Need anything from the city or anything, just, you're just going to use the park.
Yes, permission to park.
Okay?
I make a motion to allow the Masonic Lodge, number five, fourteenth, for your Easter egg, nine and Dixman Park, on Saturday, April the fourth.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, Joe wants a question already.
What time, Saturday?
At two P.M.
At two P.M.
Two P.M., okay, very important, okay.
All right, you got it. All right.
Okay, we're going right on down here to Taylor Green, P.C., uh, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen audit.
This isn't a different neighborhood, I don't know. Except it's changed.
It was on your desk.
Yeah, I did, I kind of do. That's part of the use. Hey, they're over here. Uh, no, that's older than here. No, that's the first thing.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay. Okay. Uh, we have in front of you the audits, the audit of financial statements along with our reports. And we'll just jump right to the report and then we will talk about the, uh, the letter that's in front of everybody's booklet. The independent auditor's report that you will find under probably the third page. Now, you're here right, right where you are. In page before and that page. They'll say independent auditor's report is top. Okay. Our report, uh, states that the financial statements that are attached to our report do conform with generally accepted accounting principles, uh, in the United States of America towards government entities, um, that there won't, you won't find anything in the report or in the financial statements that does not adhere to, uh, those principles, okay? And we all knew that probably we would get to that point, you know, that everything would be, would be cleared up. It's just what it took to get there, okay? And you all remember our meeting here about a month, month and a half ago, when we discussed, uh, some of the issues, uh, involving the audits. And the letter that you find in there is the letter, it's, uh, it's called the letter those charged governors. It's not actually part of the audit, um, report, but it is a required part of our audit to inform, uh, the governing board of issues that we came across. Most of these things we talked about, uh, before, but it's not going to really be anything new in here, but it will, uh, we do document, uh, some of the difficulties that we encountered in the audit, uh, and plus some of the major, uh, adjustments that we had to make, uh, to the financial statements to get them, uh, to conform with generally accepted accounting principles. So, on the first page, about two-thirds of the way down, you will find a section titled "Difficulties Encountered in Performing the Audit." I will just go down through here. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these unless you, you want to, uh, because we did, uh, talk about all these things, uh, about a month and a half ago. Uh, the first one was the consolidation of QuickBooks files. When that was done, there were a lot of, a lot of problems, uh, getting things set properly, a lot of duplicate, uh, entries and things like that. So, there were one of the difficulty to reencounter. Uh, the fact that the city does not use, uh, number two, uh, the accounts receivable or accounts payable function requires additional work to determine what those balances should be, um, so that causes, uh, the audit to be a little more, uh, difficult. There are four committee, committees that, uh, their, uh, accounting is not recorded in QuickBooks, so it's, uh, we have to chase that information down. We'll get it recorded in the, uh, the financial statements. If everything was recorded in, in, uh, QuickBooks, that would make the task a little easier. The city still has twenty-eight bank accounts, um, and we, we talk about this every year, that, uh, it would be, it'd be much easier if they would, uh, if the city would consolidate those accounts, uh, down to a more manageable level. That probably has something to do with why, uh, some of these things don't get recorded in QuickBooks, because when you're working with twenty-eight different bank accounts, that's a lot to keep track of. There are some bank accounts you can't really, uh, they're required, uh, by either statute or, uh, by bond covenants, uh, but, but they don't have to be twenty-eight. Don't know exactly, I can't give you a number that, that it would be, um, acceptable, but I would certainly think that, uh, it could be put it down to fifteen, not too much of a problem. Okay, talk to the next page, you're going to see a, uh, section called Corrected and Uncorrected Misstatements. These are some of the, of the, um, most material misstatements that we found in our audit. Number two was the duplicate payroll entries, uh, throughout the year, which had to be, uh, backed out, total four hundred thousand dollars. Another two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars worth of non-payroll related duplicate entries, um, which we had to adjust for. We had to adjust for the, the summer ball committee because nothing was ever entered into the, into the books and records, uh, the city, so we had to, uh, account for that. There is number five, it was seventy-four thousand dollars worth of, uh, nine forty-one payments, and, and nine forty-one payments are payroll taxes, so there were payroll taxes, uh, amounting to that, that were classified as expense when they actually were just offset liabilities, uh, they had given, um, number six, some assets that were disposed of during the year, that's, that's pretty normal. The cemetery fund had to record, uh, some income and expenses from the cemetery board. Number eight, uh, there was, we had to make an adjusting entry to, um, re-class to income to offset accounts receivable that we actually probably had booked the year before. Number nine, again, these all have to do with accounts receivable and accounts payable in order to get those to the actual amounts that they, that they are. Those all had to be entered. Uh, the tip fund, uh, needed an adjustment for accounts payable. Sewer fund needed, uh, an entry, it's, it's a large entry, but, you know, it's only one entry, uh, to reflect the payoff of the sewer bond, um, and then the water fund had a, had an adjustment to record the grant, um, receivable. Those things were the biggest, um, you know, hindrances to the audit is just, is just making sure that, that you've got all of the information there and it's supposed to be there. But in the end, I, I always feel like we've, we've done that, um, but it's a, it's a hard ache for everybody to get to that. So, on the next page, you're going to see, uh, some other findings. Uh, these are findings of non-compliance, uh, that the city did not meet during the year. You'll see that the finding, uh, two thousand and fourteen dash one has to do with the, uh, gas fund certificates of participation, uh, that the city is, is supposed to repay net revenues, um, of not less than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the amount required to be paid, uh, during the year, um, and if that does happen, then they're supposed to hire a consultant to do a rate study to see if, uh, if rates need to be adjusted. The city didn't meet that and they did not hire a consultant, uh, to, to. Final number two, the waterworks and sewage system refunding, uh, revenue bonds. This is where there's, there's two different, uh, accounts, uh, reserve accounts that money is supposed to be deposited into. One is the debt service reserve account, and then the other is the depreciation and replacement account. The debt service account is to be funded, they're both to be funded, eleven hundred and fifty dollars a month until the debt service fund reaches forty-five thousand dollars, and then it doesn't have to be funded anymore, but what you've been doing is just put, continue to put the eleven fifty into the depreciation and replacement fund, and that's supposed to double to twenty-three hundred. So, at the beginning, you split, you split them out until one fund is funded fully, and then you take the entire payment and, and put it into the other fund. And that wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't done. And we did talk about this, that last year, okay? And, and we made the same note last year that we, that we made this year, you can see in the talics, that it's, it's really, it's, it's really strange wording, uh, in, in the covenants, so, uh, it's, it's hard to, to, uh, understand that, but this is, this is the way that, that we understand it. And, uh, my suggestion would be to, uh, get ahold of, uh, the trustee and, and ask him, you know, to make sure, all right? But we believe that this is the way that, that it should be done. Finding, uh, two thousand and fourteen dash three, the cemetery trust. The cemetery trust, uh, states that, uh, there are certain amount that's supposed to be put into the trust account, uh, equal to fifty percent of the sale of lots, uh, and it's supposed to be deposited quarterly, and, um, it, that's not being done. And, you know, we, of course, we just, you know, it was only last year that we just found out about this trust fund. And, and so we don't know how accurate it has been up to that point, but we know during the audit period, uh, it hasn't, it hasn't been done. And that trust fund has a fair amount of money, um, no doubt. Okay, two thousand and fourteen dash four, um, the city is required to transfer from the gas, sanitation, water, sewer, and street funds in an amount equal to thirty percent of the checking account balance. Each of the above department checking accounts has the first of June each year to be credited to the general fund of the city. And the city is not, is not doing that, is not transferring thirty percent of both balances over to the.
I did, I forgot street is what I did. I did all of them and I forgot, I didn't get the street. I was looking on the component list. Because I did all the rest of the funds.
Okay, and then that last, um, the last section down there, starting with the independent one, these are, uh, areas of, uh, concern, um, that came to our attention, you know, during the audit. And, and these are things that, that the city could, could do a better job of, uh, in the future. If we could get all of the committee bank accounts through QuickBooks, uh, if the committee, um, chairs could bring in accounting to the city clerk on a monthly, a quarterly basis where the information would be put in to, to QuickBooks, bank accounts could be reconciled, then the information would already be there and, uh, we'd have to go chasing for it. At the top of the next page, number two is that, uh, two-part receipts have been, are being used for collections in the city, uh, but we recommend that those receipt books be numbered, and the ones that are currently being used are not numbered. And the reason why is, is it's just like voided checks, those things should be accounted for, okay, if they, if they come missing. And if they, if there is some that's, that's voided, you know, the, the carbon is left in there and so it can, you can see that, that that one did not get used. But that way, you can, you can make sure that, that things have been, have been accounted for in those receipt books. We did have a difficulty with, um, being able to trace deposits, uh, you know, collections to deposits, um, because, uh, deposit slips, and I think I'm right, Nancy's got to yell at me if I say this wrong, but the, the deposit slips are not, are not itemized by what is on the deposit slip, okay, who it's from or what it's for, so you, you can't trace any of, any of those kinds of things back to the original documentation. Yes. Okay, number four is, um, you know, we talked a little bit about this last time, the Max Creek law, and in the, in the financial statements, there is a calculation on compliance with the Max Creek laws.
Thirty.
Thirty? Okay, yeah, thirty. Note number four, B one. Currently, uh, the Max Creek law is, is at thirty percent, um, but there's a real possibility that it's going to go to ten percent, and you can see that your calculation there is well under the thirty, but just over the ten. So, as of, as of now, there's no problems, um, but you just need to be aware in, in the future if, if the law changes. And this is something that is to be reported, uh, every year, um, and it actually was supposed to start last year, I believe, um, but it is to be reported every year with the audit of financial statements, this calculation of, of your fines, um, that you collect over revenues that you have, so. Okay, and then number five, um, we still have a concern about separation of duties and cross-training, uh, in the city. There's not, there's not enough segregation of duties and, uh, there needs to be cross-training with, with different jobs, especially where the court's, uh, concerned, um, because, you know, there's just, more people need to know how to do this stuff in case, uh, something happens to the court clerk and they're not around, um, someone else needs to understand how the J.I. system works and, uh, it's reported, it's going to be reported. So, in a nutshell, that's the Granby Audit, June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. I don't think that, you know, within the financial statements, and, you know, we always, we always say this, that this is a lot to absorb in a meeting, but I encourage each and every one of you to take the financial statements home with you and looking over, reading. If you have questions, feel free to call us and we can explain what something is or, or what a balance is, or where did this come from, or, or what that is. We're always happy to, to, to explain things. But if you've got any questions now, we'll do that too.
If you were to start from scratch on this, I know you're not here to give advice and tell everybody how to run the city, but if you were to start from scratch hypothetically, where would you start?
From the accounting standpoint, I would get outside help. And I know we, we, we talked about that before. Granby is, is, I don't know that I'm going to say Granby's unique because I don't know that, but Granby has a lot of things going on for a town of its size. It's complex. I mean, you know, the town of, I don't know, what is it now, twenty-two, twenty-four? Two, you know? That's a pretty good set of financial status for a town of that size, of this size, so.
A little checking account, right? Why, from the county standpoint, why do we need some? I mean, I hear we've got to have one, but I never get a.
Well, you, the only ones that you're required to have, you're required to have a general fund account, okay? You're, you're required to have, um, accounts that are designated, like those debt service fund accounts and the depreciation and replacement accounts, those, those, those kinds of, of bank accounts are, are required. Actually, they're not required, they're required as funds, but that is the easiest way, okay, to, to do it, because those accounts have very little activity, you know, in it. Twelve deposits may go in, one or two checks may come out in a year, all right? Those are, those are, are easy to maintain. But you can take a lot of the committee accounts and, and combine them as long as you have a, a method to, to be able to break them apart, okay? In other words, there's five of this twenty thousand dollars is in this bank account, five thousand dollars belongs here, five thousand dollars belongs here, and, and that kind of thing, okay? You, you have to have a litigant to be able to do that, keep track of it, but they don't all have to be in separate banks. Now, it would, it probably wouldn't be that difficult to come up with a list of ones that are required, that you got to have. And then beyond that, it's, it's whatever the comfort level is.
And I might be wrong on this, but didn't there, as far as the payroll and the, the actual physically writing checks to this account, that account, this account, can't QuickBooks take care of that with the department number and just keying in the proper number and just?
Yeah, you can actually have, you, you can have, uh, one bank account that has multiple sub-accounts to it, okay? And, and, and all those sub-accounts are not separate bank accounts, they're just portions of that main account. So, you've got a main account that has twenty thousand dollars, and then you've got these four sub-accounts, the money's all in one account, but if those sub-accounts will break it out and tell you what belongs to what, what community.
That way, basically it's touch and pee, tell you where you're at and where you're going, that probably happens after your twenty-eight checklist, right?
Brian, and that's a question, did, did your firm introduce the QuickBooks to Granby three years ago, or is that before you?
Um, no, we actually did it the last time that we audited, uh, which would have been nine years ago.
Okay, so at least nine years it's been in the system?
It's, yeah, had some step or another.
We didn't have QuickBooks when I was here.
We, didn't we the last year?
That last year.
The last year that we audited?
Last year, the C.P.A. group.
No, they set it up before I was even hired, QuickBooks was on, because who was the young lady that came in that first year?
I think it was Christina. It was Christina that set it up?
Because I don't remember her, and it was Christina that set it up, and when she came in to do the audit, I had showed her where I had had everything in QuickBooks and we were off one cent, I think, in the general fund.
So, but it's, but that's an interesting question.
It was. So, before that, it was just basically, uh, business as usual in Granby. So before that, it was just basically, uh, business as usual in Grandview. Put it down on paper and hope the best.
It was Jo- no, no, well, it wasn't hope for the best. It was Joanne's ledger books, and, 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 and Joanne's ledger books were really good.
So if, if, over a period of time, over a period of, what, nine years, or wherever the case may be, it's just gotten, just gotten off? It looks like to me that, that anything that was good on the paper would be good on the computer.
Well, in my opinion, it, it should be better. Uh, because the, the information should be easier to access. But, but yes, you're right.
I guess my, my, I guess what I'm, what I'm concerned about is, is the reason why, we spend so much time chasing numbers. And I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. From the time, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joanne had the paper, and she basically balanced it all, and I think that everybody else attempted to do the, the same. But for some reason, the, is the accounts have got off? The checking accounts, or the, or trying to use paper part of the time and computer part of the time, or what's?
Uh, well, there were a few years like that. But that shouldn't be, that, that shouldn't be the, the issue, okay? There's still no reason why that everything that is in QuickBooks should be generated from a source document, okay? Whether it's a bill from a vendor, a timesheet from an employee, or a receivable. Receivables are a little bit, are, are, are a little bit trickier, okay? Because you don't actually do the billing out of, out of QuickBooks, you know, you don't fill the gas and water and, and all that out of, out of QuickBooks. So those, those are, are a little trickier. But outside of that, everything else should start with a source document and end with a source document. So theoretically...
And ours doesn't?
Nothing would, would be off. Well, it also, that's, that's, that's part of the deal. I mean, I, I tell, I tell my clients that are not audit clients that, you know, if you will bring me a QuickBooks file with reconciled bank accounts, if the bank accounts are reconciled, I don't care how screwed up it is, I can fix it. And I can, okay? Because I know where things are supposed to go. That's the biggest problem, is information goes into the computer, but it doesn't go into the right place. And so then, it, it messes this up, which, which may in turn mess something else up. And, and if you don't have an awareness of when you make an entry into QuickBooks, of what happens on the other side, then, you know...
Well, I can, I can, I can understand how something could possibly be entered wrong, just the, hitting the wrong key or something like that. But how do you, how do you maintain a, a watchdog over that? That you don't let it go from month to month, or week to week? And you catch yourself, is there a watchdog over what you're entering?
Well, that watchdog has to be a person. I mean, it's, there's nothing within, you know, QuickBooks will let you do whatever you want to do. So it, it's, the, the watchdog has to be, you know, another set of eyes looking at what's going on.
There's nothing that kicks out a red flag saying this just doesn't compute.
Right, right. And I, and that's what, you know, I, I tell a lot of people that, that you don't have to know the right answer to, to every situation that comes up, but you gotta be able to recognize when it's wrong. And that's, and that's a real, that's a real key. You gotta be able to look at something and say, this doesn't look right. It doesn't, that makes sense. Now, maybe it is right. But if you've got an eye for seeing that, then you know the things to take a look at and investigate further. You know, one of the, one of the, the basic things are, if you see any account within QuickBooks that has a negative number, there needs to be a, a question asked, you know, why, how come this is a negative number, okay? There's a couple of accounts that that's normal, but not very minimal. So, you know, when, when a situation like that happens, you know, how come, how come the same didn't look wrong? Doesn't look right?
Hey, you guys, talking about accepting audits, Jerry, do we do that, go ahead and read this at home and whatever? Or do you want to ship it and accept it tonight?
Oh, it, it's, that's a key question.
And also, the next one, uh, approved to pay the board, you know, to be able to do that. Now, at the next meeting, or, or, and then, okay? All right, we see the audit's okay with us, which I, I don't see nothing wrong with it, you know?
Branding that total on what the, uh, the total bill is completely? What is the total? Complete total?
Read that one.
No, I'm talking about maybe...
Oh, oh, the total, total, oh. Oh, the, the to- the total amount? Yes. But that last bill that you got is not the final bill. Because that was, that was January, all right? And we finished this up last week.
So, so what about this one here, before?
The three thousand seventy-five? Yes.
That's, is that, is this the end?
Here, that's not the end. This right here is the end, okay? And that's a copy of the one that you have, since you asked. This is... Right, you have that one, and then this is the final, okay? So that plus that. And on this one, I put, that's the total. That's the total cost of all of our bills for the...
Does everybody have this?
No, they don't, that's, I just, I just did that.
So... Write it down, write it down, pass it down.
Um, the, well, the fi- the total for the entire audit, in terms of twenty-six thousand, seventy-five thousand. Look on the second page, you'll find it, it tells us. Five thousand, five seventy-five.
Is due, but that's not total?
That's not the total, the twenty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars is the total. So plus the twenty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars, how much more was it? Uh, twenty-five hundred, on top of the six thousand, seventy-five, oh, twenty-five hundred dollars? Right.
So we're, so we're, uh, uh, change shy of eleven thousand dollars over?
Yeah, I hear it worth ten thousand dollars.
And, and it says here that we, we rolled off seven thousand dollars worth of work?
Yes.
On the bidder?
Yes. Between January's and February's bill. Uh, we ignore that, those are yours. I don't want them back.
How much was it over last year, two years old?
Last year, the, the total was twenty-two. And the... We, we, yeah, I mean, it was twenty-two total. And there was seven, seventy-five, seventy-five, seventy-five. Yeah, we rolled off. And that was to get it down to the twenty-two.
So it was actually, overall, a little higher, but do that back down.
It'd been almost thirty thousand dollars, unfortunately, if you'd rolled this full amount last time.
Actually, that's what they all would have been, all three years, but then twenty, almost twenty-nine or thirty-one, getting the first, which we rolled off more than a magazine bill.
So you have, so you have staff running numbers and chasing figures and what have you like that, and you're having to pay their wages and what have you like that? You're assuming some of the cost. Your expenses go on also. Now, last year, at the same, about this same time, we, we, it seemed like deja vu, we looked at the same situation, uh, almost.
I remember the, the gentleman asking to use the part for...
At the same, at the same meeting last year.
And I even, and I even was, uh, had, had talked to the, uh, the CTA group, which is another account firm that I work. And, and, you know, they're kind of what they was sharing with me was, they run in the same type of property, they just had a hard time chasing down numbers. I just have a hard time understanding how you, how this becomes that big a problem. Is it just that our numbers are in, uh, different, uh, places? You wanna, you wanna think that we'll have to run all over the town after, but they're, they're here somewhere.
Right, they're, you know, somebody knows it. Uh, and, and, and that's the, the part of the, of the, of the investigation, to, to figure out who, who has the information. You know, when it comes to these committee accounts that aren't even on the books, we, you know, we gotta go to those people, cause there's, there's nothing. We, we start with zero. Uh, and, but we know they exist. So, you know, we need to find out where they are and, and what's, what's in them. This thing with the, with the payroll, double payrolls, you know? Doing the payroll and then doing general entries to do the payroll again. That's, you know, and that's every single payroll. So tha- that's, that's tough. You know, to determine what's right.
Could I ask a question? Brad, if everything had been taken from my general ledger and put into QuickBooks, would that have came out, or was stuff not entered into the QuickBooks? Would that have been possible?
Well, it is, as long as, as you had every, every line entry.
So if it was, if it was all put in the QuickBooks, it should've been there for my ledger.
It's, you know, the information comes in, it gets put in, in QuickBooks, the information goes out. I, I really, I really believe that, that the, the, the board would, would benefit on an ongoing basis from having better information to look at on a, on a day-to-day basis. You know, there's, there's really not any reason especially to use the accounts table function. One report. You know, you click a button, and you got a report that tells you exactly what your outstanding bills are in any given day. And you can run, you can run it by, uh, it'll tell you if they're current, if they're past due. All of that information. It's, you know, the better the information is that goes into it, the better the information is that comes out. And that's what we're gonna say.
Other question?
If you wanna off the floor, one guy?
Okay.
Uh, I've seen you publish so, a number of other ones here. Is this audit a public record? And if so, uh, is there a place where a member of the general public, like myself, Bobby Brooks, anybody else, can go ahead and just simply go there and download and look at it? I mean, I know that, uh, what? There was a big to-do about, uh, the Missouri auditor auditing the R eight school board, and you'd go there and we'd be known for them, is there a place where essentially we can do the same? Or do we have to come here? Okay. Essentially, it is a public record, so the people who want to see it can come in and get it done. Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions?
And is there a chance that you could email anyone or two, like you didn't work that same thing, you said, Harry?
Yes. Thank you.
The, at the conclusion of every audit, we asked the mayor to sign what's called a management representation letter. And that's what it is, and there's two copies there. One for you to keep, for the city to keep for their records, and one, uh, for you to sign and give back to us. That basically says that you did not commit a fraud on your audit. Whatever we asked for, we got. Nobody's been lying to us about anything. And all the information that we did give was true and accurate, and if this is not...
Okay, I'll read all that. So, the audit, they actually, on the end of the audit, they don't show anything, just a lot of work.
Just a lot of work?
But it didn't show no big shortage, or no big balmy, nobody's, uh, took off a million dollars or nothing, right? You know, I'll, I'll sign it, you know? I'd be glad, uh, uh, events to do tonight, but I thought we should look at this real quick, and then I'll sign them both. And I'll let, uh, should, I can call a fax him or mail him to you?
Um...
Can we fax it? Sure.
Do I? You know, that's...
Okay, I'll, I'll take it out.
One of them, one of them's for you to keep, right?
Most likely, we'll, we'll get that done, or what, Paul?
Okay, now, you guys are probably done with me. I wanna say one other thing, okay? Before I, before I wrap up. I said this last time at the meeting, um, that, that the city spends way too much on audits. But until you get your accounting in control, I don't see that it's, that it's gonna be any, any better than that. So I'm gonna throw this out, now that the audit's over. Is that if you all would be interested, and if you wanna wait till after the election, that's fine, so let the new board deal with this. But if you have any interest in having our firm be your outside accountant rather than be your outside auditor, nobody knows your books better than we do. And, and that would actually give us a lot more pleasure in helping than what we're doing. Because you guys...
And you would sit down with our employees and get all the bros out of the places.
Now, that means that we cannot be your auditor again.
Okay, but you would be, you'd be the CP, I have. And you would be looking at all the things you told us before, that you already, we've already paid you for. And you would help change them over to QuickBooks or any workday and give us back one turn.
We would train, we would develop sets of internal controls, uh, we could we could oversee, um, things like that. And, and it, you know, I think if, if there's an interest, you, you all just let us know, and we can come up with particulars and make a presentation to you on, on what it would be, what it would entail, what it would cost. But you can tell us what are you willing to spend, and we can design something that would, would fit that. And you're probably looking at, at there's a fair amount of work to be done. And you're probably looking at, at, there's a fair amount of work to be done in the beginning. But as time goes on, it would be less and less and less. As systems get in place, as training gets done, um, you would need us less and less. And where it would just eventually become an oversight thing. Now, I don't see that happening for anything less than eighteen months. But probably by the June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, then I think you'd be, you'd be, you'd be in good enough shape that we can do those financial statements and hand them to your auditor. So.
In other words, should I also have it come through online? You'll, you'll be ready by my turn over to you.
How much extra would that cost though? How mu- how much extra would it cost to have?
Well, that depends on, on what, what the city would want. So we could come up with a plan if, if there's an interest. So, yeah, I thank you for your time. Thank you.
We'd be waiting and paying and. All right, now we're going on past that. Okay, we got Bill Singh. Going to that, right there? Okay, request liquor license.
Gentlemen, uh, this is the second time I'm here to ask something. Uh, before that, you know, I would like to introduce myself to the people of this town that didn't know me. My name is Bill Singh and I'm the owner of Snack Pack and, uh, fast food. My brother Sonny is over here. He's here for a first time, this is my second time. And thanks for accepting us in this small community as a part of the community. And we are four months, this is our first quarter done almost. And a few more days, we'll have a full month done. Thanks for your business. Second, during those wonderful four months, uh, going through requests through the customers, you know, and, uh, especially the store out here for Snack Pack up the hill. Uh, customers had a couple of requests. One was diesel. They desperately need diesel in this town. And we came and asked how, uh, then, is there anything we needed to have approval from the city? Said no. So we already starting that we'll have a, for a small truck and a bigger semi truck, a diesel in this town also for the community. And we'll have some, we'll make some money and city will have more revenue. But then there's another thing that we really need, uh, city's help, which is a liquor license. Uh, it's the same, but was also, again, customers, me and my company, and more revenue coming into the city. And I would really appreciate it. We get approved. And that's all.
What is that, what is that process?
Uh, that's paper.
First off.
Do you have to change ordinance, right?
Yeah, there's a, there's a maximum number of liquor license that are allowed. So there would have to be a, a, be a, a change in the ordinance.
It would be similar to a, a package store license.
Yes.
So I put in your packets a copy of ordinance that Jared had drew up with Paul Ferguson, who's mayor. That changes the number of licenses. And I wrote it up that this would need to pass before we can allow the changes.
See, I would like to put one more thing. Uh, I, I really don't want to see, uh, us for any kind of burden on the city as far as financial, to be honest, you know? And I thought this outside the official, uh, to few people. If there is something my, me or my company can do anything to make this ordinance come true where we don't have any problem having a license or okay from the city, we welcome to do that. I mean, we did that in others towns where this kind of problem happened. Attorney said there's already maximum things of license. But there's also a way to have ordinance done. It just costs a little bit and my company wouldn't do that.
It's not necessarily the cost, it's just we got access, right? And this would work.
Yes, but, yeah, I haven't looked at it in, what, five years or three, four years. It works, yes, yeah. I don't believe they made any kind of change. I wasn't made aware that they made any kind of change. Started, I know there's still.
Okay, so going on, we have Michael here that wants to have liquor by the drink. Would this in turn change?
Well, it looks like, it looks like it does.
Yeah, it looks like it increases everything.
Yeah, well, Bill, you know, we talked about before, we're a woman down here too. And we found out this was an idea too. It wasn't a hundred feet, so therefore.
I didn't actually, to be honest, I stopped digging. Once I realized it's about the church, you know? And I, I stopped digging after. I take, it's, it's not, I, I'm here to do a business, you know, at the same time. And I wanted to see what's best interest. And then when I realized it is like about the church, me and my brother, we talked and we said, okay, as long as we can get it up to here, that's fine.
You know, Bill, also, it, it had me kinda after we talked, and I was pretty well going to help you, you know? But when I figured it out, and of course it's always true. But I, I stepped it off into the, to the ground, it's very little, it's about eighty-five feet. Well, and, and we'd had some other people trying to get, uh, beer license only, but they didn't acquire, but they asked about it. So they didn't try to get it, but I think it was only at a hundred and twenty feet. Paul and Paul looked up, it'd be like three hundred feet plus. Here's what I'm trying to say there. You've got a twenty-four hour placement. That's close. And you've got a twenty-four hour.
No, we, we not here for this place, Al.
I know, not now, but if we had been, that's what I said. We talked about this one when I knew he was here at court. And to me, that would be a pay disability, uh, whatever you call it, for the police department. And also we had to have the lock off the liquor bar the day. And for the day, you could bring the liquor back in. So that would've been a reliability on you. So we're talking now about up at Snack Pack. Okay, here's one more deal that I had, that a, a guy told me about. He said he applied for liquor license here in Granby so many years ago, and he was turned down. He's my brother-in-law or nephew, whatever people wanna call him. So he moved out of town.
There's no application, there's no application that you apply, no.
Well, he said he applied and he was turned down. So that was by word of mouth, but, uh, that's who he was talking to at the time, the mayor. So, anyway.
I, I also have original license from the guy. It was there once upon a time. I have original copy. It was a liquor license once upon a time.
Besides this other one?
Yeah. Original license.
Mike had the license.
I had the package certificate license.
Yeah, and he went, and he went.
Twelve years.
See, I'm, but I, that's what I'm saying, you know? Man, I mean, I understand somebody tried.
It went to Ramey's.
My license, they took away and didn't renew it. And, and Ramey's got that license.
But I'm just trying to say, Bill, and to the people, if we, if we put on a liquor license for you, I don't see nothing wrong with it. But I think we're already able to have two liquor licenses in case somebody wants to come in and competition you.
Like your Rameys.
Or, or my own, uh, you know, there wouldn't be nothing wrong with that. If you were, if we, if we can do it through the law, you're, but this is a sixty-year law. This law, that second, that store license. Well, actually, the first one that was here was completely dispossessed.
Well, I think we can make adjustments here according to ordinance. Definitely, I think the adjustments can be made to allow Mr. Singh to have the package part in his, in his store. And then Ramey's has that as long as you can maintain fair competition. And I think we can kill two birds with one stone, because I think that Mike was looking for, not that, but something different. But it would be covered in the same, in the same ordinance change.
Anyway, I wanted to understand if those people come to me and, you know, they really got anything in it. Well, it's just there.
So we can make these changes first, or, or what do we need to do?
Uh, your second one.
We need to, we're gonna work together and get ordinance together. We can do it in the next meeting. And then.
Yeah, we, we just need to know what the, what the council wants to expand it to and, or if they wanna expand the, the amount of liquor licenses. Uh, this was requested of me, like I said, three or four years ago, uh, my draft in an ordinance. I don't, I guess it never went in front of the council or, or something, it never got passed. But, uh, it, it's just something I would have to relook at. It's not that big of a.
Do we want like two package liquor?
Well, there should be at least fair competition.
Right. And so right now, we have one. And one.
You'd say you'd have to have two packages and then one liquor by the drink.
In mine, it's governed by the state. I have to meet a criteria. I have to sell seventy-five thousand dollars with the goods. Fifty percent of that has to be food or I'm not eligible. And I have hit that right now. I'm doing eighty, eighty-five on food and fifteen on the, on the beer and wine. So I know I can hit that without a problem. That's the only thing that the state says I have to do.
The only liquor by the drink we have in there is beer and wine, right?
There's, there's a section down there too, that's speaking of the. Uh, the wallpaper when I got my, when I applied for the other, there's, um.
Is that through the state?
Yeah.
Does he, what, any things?
Well, no, it's a paper you guys gave me, you had it going out on, on the, uh, beer and wine.
Right. And didn't say anything about liquor by the drink?
There's another paragraph for liquor by the drink.
So, so basically we need to, so basically we need to look at the, the adjustments to the ordinance.
Right.
And then, uh, approach Mr. Singh and, and Michael about their request.
Right.
There is a section in, uh, for.
And they're both here tonight, they're asking, so when the license comes up, he's complicated.
Exactly, I think we could.
If we have one left, it'll be there for competition.
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, have here pursue this, see exactly what the state statute is on the liquor license and to pursue increasing the number of package and liquor by drink.
No second.
All of them, please. You have three hours.
Give us a week.
It's fine.
Thank you, man. Richard, you're the second man I'm giving the.
Thank you.
And Mike, that kinda, that kinda fall into your category also.
Basically, it's just, I, I mean.
We know what, we know what you need and, and what the requirements are, so it's under the same ordinance change will accommodate both.
That would be fine. Once I get that, then I have to meet the state's requirements.
And that is a, that is a really stout requirement.
Yes, it is.
Positive for Granby.
And they audit me also. They, they come back and check their books to make sure you are hitting that, that goal. It's, it's pretty tight.
Seventy-five thousand.
Gross sales and fifty percent has to be food.
Okay, that makes yours, Michael Lindy, who already requested for, or not, right, sir? Okay. And you already have, to let everybody know, you already have a beer and wine license.
Yes.
Jared, give that to him.
What was his name?
Sorry.
Jared.
Okay, uh, Martin Lindy's there here, requires to, uh, all the, uh, green, red and yellow.
Thank you, Gilbert, I am licensed this time.
Got it here.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get this, you got a copy of this?
Did you guys get one of these?
Richard. Richard.
What? We've been passing, and we all know, we, we have a ten minute tonight, if that's what you want. We got ten minutes, up to ten minutes, Martin. If we'd like for you to finish sooner, so we can get this done, okay?
Yeah, probably, more likely. Why, you said five minutes last time, and I was doing a video and all I got was four and a half minutes. You guys were giving me a shortcut. Now, I'm running for mayor. The usual reason I run for mayor is to, A, run for mayor. Uh, right now, for the past ten years, the state of Missouri has decided that quote, white supremacists do not get to run on a political party ballot. And what I'm gonna do is just simply point out is that under that guise, then perhaps the state of Missouri should be abolished, because it says the states will maintain a representative form of government, a republican form of government, which means a representative democracy. If you were saying that certain people cannot run for office or vote on the basis of what they think, and by that, by that standard, in seventy-six, no taxation without representation, I would say the white supremacists should not have to pay taxes or obey the law of foreign government. Any case, so I'm gonna go ahead and make that point, and even if I lose, I told one guy here, many cases, I deliberately filed lawsuits in order to lose, so that I can tell my bunch of extremists that there is no possible peaceful way to settle matters, but through the old-fashioned ways, a regime change through civil war. But in any case, the second thing I found is that when I heard about the, when I heard about the, I'm actually talking about tearing down the city auditorium with the city administration building. And then I read in the paper about how they had bought the old Chester building to tear it down to give it to the city. I remember ten years ago, I said, look, I didn't pay three point one million dollars. Why don't you simply buy the Chester building? It was gonna sell for about sixty-five thousand dollars. All right? And renovate it for the, uh, for people. No, they had to spend three point one million dollars. So now you use the tip funds to tear down another piece of Granby heritage. When I came down as a seven-year-old child in July of nineteen sixty-five, Granby had a lot of beautiful buildings here. I've been to Europe, I've seen that they maintain their heritage. It seems like Granby doesn't really care what's heritage. And that's probably the main thing I'm worried here. Any case, I went in and asked Kay Baum about a referendum. And she says, well, no, they haven't put the ballot up. And no, I don't want to really put it on official ballot page, but like in case, I said, okay, we go ahead, go ahead and have a referendum question. And they came down to drawing it. What comes down to it, for whatever reason, they passed a tip section here, they got a tip board. And really, you can't expect the voters to micro manage how you run things here. A referendum should usually just be a yes or no thing. I could figure out to it. I was happily thinking of just simply saying, no, I'm not gonna, but I said I would. So I come down here and I see some character, well, I suspect this is you from outside, whining about my webpage. Whining about how I had been kicked out by Morris Golecki way back in two thousand five. And the answer is, yes, I used to be at Missouri contact here. He got caught drunk as a skunk, plotting to rob banks in Alabama for illegal nose candy. And he was facing a thirty-year sentence, so he had to essentially disclaim some of the extremists. So he did kick me out for extremism. So he did kick me out for extremism. I admit that. What I was gonna point out is that, yes, I do have a valid church which has been incorporated since two thousand and six. In any case, I have seen out west where certain Jews and the rest, "We are the pastor and ordinance against hate." And it is fine for however long it lasts here. But what I did is I recorded and seen, like, he was already talking to you in the address about this nonsense that he put on there, which probably had nothing to do with it, with really anything. It shouldn't really be a municipal function decide what goes on somebody else's webpage. Maybe I was a little bit annoyed about that, but I started doing it, and then I was threatened with, I was threatened with arrest here, arrest for disturbing the peace here. I was tempted to, and I've talked to, I've talked to Chief Kelly earlier today here, and I was tempted to ask him that if he was prepared to read the riot act of King George the Second here and give me a half hour to disperse. But, you know, which is supposedly the common law, you know, common law means of discouraging the right in the reign of King George the Second. He was the one for, you know, son George the Third. But in any case, the problem is, is only like twenty years ago when I could hold my own, when we had paper license council credit rights, I have my wife, who are common law, like Roxy, who is bed bound, and essentially I have to take care of her needs here. And if I was in jail, I wouldn't be able to take care of her. I said, "Good thing you didn't arrest her, good thing I backed down, Jacob. Who else, you and your deputy would have come up to my house and wiped Roxy's butt here for?" But in any case, getting down to, getting down to what I want here. You know, I think, I think you are the worst mayor. I think you're the worst way to compare.
Martin, let's not, let's down the rail.
Okay, stay on the rail here. Essentially, I've got two years statute limitation to file. A Title Forty-two, Section one nine eight three, Wallace. You, you talked to me, you talked to me, you seemed a little bit disturbed, like you sort of knew what a train leg was coming down the road here. But in any case, what I wanna do is that, listen to him as he'll be going. And chances are, he may not be protected by your insurance company or maybe he's not here. It seems to me it's a slam dunk for me to go ahead and get ten thousand dollars and crack a nut. I just assume, I just assume not to do that. But you, 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 except I'm getting out there. The first one is I'm gonna poll three aldermen to see whether they thought that Mayor Ousler acted correctly or not.
Well, let me, and I'm being respectful. First of all, these meetings are business meetings to conduct city business. To be put on the agenda is at, actually, the mayor's choice.
Okay.
If you, if you have a valid point, and you do have some valid points, I'd love to hear them. But to just stand and criticize and slander an elected official, Martin, that's no way to do it. That's no way.
Okay, what's slander?
Well, I mean, you stood here and called all of us, whatever you call us, at the last minute. I don't, I don't appreciate it.
Okay.
I, I've tried to respect you, I have, and I expect the same. These other men were elected officials. And I think, you know, I'm not saying anyone deserves respect, but I think in a sense they do have to earn it.
Oh, I agree.
But just a, every meeting grant is, you know, I wanna hear your point of view. But as far as your religious beliefs, all those, this is no place for them.
Okay.
This is no place for them. I, I will stand, if you have concerns about the city, whatever they will be, I'll be more than happy to let you pen before the council, just like any other citizen, and speak your mind. But don't make this personal. And I think that's what you're doing, and I respect your point of view, I do. And if you wanna talk to me about it on the street or whatever, but to use the podium to slander, I don't, I don't appreciate that. I don't do it, and I expect the same.
Slander, slanderers at four here is a, essentially whether or not, you know, I, I, I have some of the mongrel in Cleveland, claiming I'm slandered here.
Well...
Because I said he was not white.
Okay.
And I, I used a Facebook picture of him.
Let's, let's stick with the Grammy problem, okay?
Grammy problem.
I, I don't have any concern about anything else. If you've got a legitimate bitch about what's going on here, I'll sit here and listen to it. But if we just take a walk down the memory lane, then I'm better.
What in the world, what in the world was happening? Some character talking about passing an ordinance against my webpage and whining about what he read in a newspaper, which was somewhat accurate here. I mean, I, I think he would have...
So it's worth a damn. It's worth a damn.
It's right there now.
Okay, well, anyway, I'm, I'm just simply gonna poll you all to see whether you've been regular, you know, mayor, or you've acted improperly or not. Either did or did. Number two, if you agree that he acted improperly, except for, was such for this misconduct, it doesn't make the city grandly liable to litigation. And number three, after informal impeachment or career of major Ousler's reputation in return for modification of damages. Essentially, what it boils down to is that I'm quite willing, I'm quite willing to let this matter go to the federal courts or, or not.
Well, I don't think it's, it's proper or by proper procedures for you to call.
That's a threat. I don't take threats.
To call out, so...
A threat that you beheld, which I'm both, you know, took off for your project, was a threat.
Okay. Let's, let's just say this. We've had a discussion.
Yeah, discussion. Are you guys gonna go ahead or you guys can go ahead and make any comment? Or do you stand by what Mayor Ousler's contact? Yes or no?
I was elected by the people to represent them.
Okay.
If it is a matter that concerns them, I will address it. But I will not, I will not let someone go off on a personal agenda. I will not...
Wouldn't you say that whether or not the city grandy is liable for violation of civil rights? Isn't, isn't that a matter of the importance of grandy? I would say...
You're done.
Thanks, Martin.
You got one of these for Martin?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
Whatever you want. You can think about that and, uh, we'll get everything clear, clear the air, but I don't like this type of stuff. It's not like...
It constitutes for us what...
We let it call all the names, not all them names?
Okay, old business.
Well, that's enough, Mr. President. Okay, where are we at now?
Old business.
Old business. Is that work session for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, but...
I think we should, uh, take care of the country down our plate right now if we're looking as far ahead on this bill.
It should be probably after the election.
I think so.
Okay. I won't talk about that anymore.
After the election. Football, a little fun.
Okay, that's out. Okay. Our chief, Kevin Johnson, uh, recon raising on what idiot? Fundraising, I'm sorry.
We discussed it in the past meeting. We discussed it at the budget meeting, get him the fireman, get him a fundraise money, check had been given to share. I think it was deposited in the general fund.
Yes.
You always decide when you make a donation back to the firemen so they can have it returned back.
Same amount you put in and you're about to put in a European? And make that understood. We're not gonna have none to do with it.
Correct.
We did before.
Did we ever get an opinion on that?
I don't know. I'm sure they're not. I just had the one I called about and I think that's what they...
We really wanna make a motion on that and get this cleared out.
That was what, twenty-five dollar?
Twenty-one, thirty-one. Twenty-two something.
Change in the amount of our choice.
I'm not trying to get away from, probably I'm like trying to city, I mean, you guys are not for profit, correct?
We, we don't have any papers yet because we hadn't ever had to have.
But I, I just...
But we're working. Yeah.
This is, well, we all just told us this and that's what we're asking.
Well, but we need to know if the city can make a donation. I, I know where it all came from and I know how it all got started, but...
We're not the rail. Come out and that's what we're asking.
Should we have the paperwork, all the necessary paperwork completed before the city tuned this?
I mean, here's why...
That's what you wanted. I'll get the paperwork, make our...
Because I don't want it in the next year, it'll come in with the same thing as the campus. And then maybe that's where we gotta spend the money, so here we are.
We wanna know we can do it. We wanna get it done, we wanna get it done.
We gotta get them into this one.
Yeah. We just base, all we wanna base it is make sure that we're on the up. That the twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-two hundred dollars going that way is...
Bring in the proof of that flash. Let's go and make sure that we're on the flash and we go on.
Yeah, let's just table it to you, get the necessary paperwork.
Okay.
Okay, you're on there somewhere. More questions, Chris, please.
And to budgeting, you know, can't worry, you guys, I was hoping to do it. Uh, just need to, who, the miles for the new brush truck, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. How you reach that ninety, or eighty-four dollars? And a clamp over the booster line and all of that down lower, throwing on that twenty-one pound of the truck to get a total of five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Yeah, that's twenty-five dollars.
Five thirty-seven, total?
Yes, and...
All the other?
All the other.
I make a motion to go ahead and let our chief, Kevin Johnson, buy the necessary equipment as he's requested for a total of five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Second. Second favor? Okay. You got it.
And just letting you know, the truck made a, made a convoy yesterday night on the trash truck.
Oh, yeah.
Instead of getting the big truck out, uh, crawling in there and we took it in.
No blur.
Yeah, you can...
I saw, just all the trucks. I saw one of the OSHA trucks. Like that one. Go behind, uh, auto zone and put a fire on the back.
Yeah. It'll be a viable trip. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, we've got the Rural Order Association Volunteer Eligitative Assessment for two thousand and fifteen. Any amount you want at all.
This is my, um, two hundred dollars that we sent to the one of the area for my block. It's not...
Most, most all municipalities do this to give them a voice and process here. I make a motion to, uh, pay the two hundred dollars to the Rural Water Association for legislative assessment of two thousand and fifteen. And I'll shut it down.
Paul, a favor? Okay. Approval of area of Martin Associates invoice in an amount of one thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. Work done in the sewer plant.
You guys have already accrued the hundred and seventy-five dollars that per hour that I thought you need to...
That's, that's the total for now.
Yep.
Okay. Make a motion, you're on somebody?
I make a motion for the approval of the area of Martin Associates invoice in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Second. Second. All of them favor? Right on. Okay, there's something. All I hear is line of credit for wastewater plant improvements. Some of you know what it is, but it's a line of credit, we'll be in the bank there, or one of the banks we choose, uh, so that when Victor or anybody at the sewer plant or any of them, uh, in the line, whatever, uh, needs the money, which we've been low on, we haven't been able to get the money for in the center. So we do generators and stuff right like that. And, uh, that's what we're trying to get. And that's recommended by the engineer and by Victor, of course, because he needs the money. And it won't be drawn on unless it's something needed for, to run the plant. And I thought, we're, we're putting in for a hundred thousand dollar. And one of them, Paul, can you read that, CBT?
Hold on, I got two. CBT, um, their fixed rate is two point nine nine, um, with three annual payments back. Our vest is two point five with five annual payments of twenty-one thousand, five forty-two fifty-six, which they didn't, um, give us what the payments would be on CBT.
Yeah.
Did we check with the DNR and stuff like that? That's a lot in there. We've already got problems, we're afraid to kind of borrow our way out of court.
Didn't, during the budget meeting, didn't Gene make mention of that, um, some loans from DNR?
Those are three percent at the outset.
They are three percent.
Uh, we looked into that. I don't know.
And it's gonna take more than, it's gonna take up to a year before we can get the funding.
Yeah, we dropped, I dropped that myself when I heard here. I mean, we, we needed to...
And the interest from CBT was?
Two point nine nine.
Less.
And our vest is two point five. And they're giving us a five-year note. Our vest is, which is, it's like a fifteen hundred dollars a year interest for five, times five.
That's off. Which one's the?
Our vest.
Our vest, fifty-nine... And CBT is?
Two point nine nine, three annual payments. But they didn't give me any kind of break in on my vest.
Victor, when we, or when you set, set forth the H R budget, uh, was there any room in that for anything like this?
Yes, we, we set aside, Gene, quite a bit of money.
Yeah, we had, we had close to a hundred thousand. I provided Paulo with a email, a breakdown, I believe, that that was transferred over to the bank to give them an idea of where we spent it. Well, we had about a hundred thousand dollars in there for repairs, uh, capital improvements, equipment acquisition, uh, remediation of the sewer. And, um, I think I listed the items we thought might have to be acquired this year and within a ninety-day period.
So this lets us move forward, just move it more rapidly?
That is the, uh, object of the loan, uh, acquisition. Uh, we can only accrue so much money through our, uh, sewer service charges per month. Uh, a lot of, the bulk of that money goes for ordinary operating expenses. And what we decided to do was to see if we couldn't get a line of credit such that we could make repairs to lift station, uh, acquire some motors, uh, get some little high flotation tires for the sled truck, for instance, um, trash basket for the lift station, et cetera, et cetera. But I think I listed that.
The payment should be, the payment should main, still stay in the, in the confines of that wastewater budget.
Correct, 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 correct.
That's on the question here. Be better than Breckin.
Yeah. I try to estimate how much money we could accrue with the rates we've got based upon what I consider the least amount of potable water consumed. I think it's in there, if you follow it. It looks like that we can, we can generate what we anticipated as the expenses set forth in the budget.
Under those circumstances, what do you think, Travis? Does this seem out of the ordinary?
Well, it seems like we're gonna have to do it, but I would like to put a stipulation on it, that any, any money that comes from us, be approved by the council before it's done. And I'd like to see a monthly statement on what we're spending, what we're paying back. I don't want this to turn into some of the other chaos we've had. I don't think it's reasonable.
Can I offer a question regarding the loans that's been offered?
Sure.
The interest that is accrued on these loans, is it only for the money that we pull out and it's not for the full loan amount? It's only for what we withdraw?
If we only draw fifty thousand this year, then we'll only pay interest on fifty thousand.
Very good, very good.
At least that's the way our vest bank, and I'm sure that CBT's the same one.
That's what we want. We pay interest on no more than what we use.
Exactly.
Very good.
It's a, it's a drawdown type thing.
Why could I dare to make a motion? I make a motion.
Go with our best bank. And the one for wastewater treatment.
Here, second.
I'll say.
Uh, all in favor? Right on. That's our best. Okay, uh, wastewater, so we tend to victory. Ms. Laney, just be quick.
One of us, the, uh, flotation tires for the sludge truck. And if you got it there, but I.
I do somewhere, yeah, yeah.
Two beds there, right?
Two beds, yeah.
Right at twenty-five hundred dollars apiece for those tires. And we're looking at five thousand dollars for tires installed for the rear of that truck.
Can you talk to Jim on that?
Yeah, I talked to Jim, we found some other tires, uh, they are less money, but they don't have that center rim going down that tire. So they're really not meant to even go out on the road, they'll just chew them up. I mean, we can go with the cheaper ones, but the tire I had on there before lasted probably sixteen years, so, you know, we got good use out of them. Personally, I would go just spend a little extra and go with those Firestone tires.
They had a lot of trouble getting stuck out of field and stuff.
Yeah, even when it was dry, I mean, we just still, you know, it was just a little bit of frost, we were getting stuck, he was getting real upset, he was tearing up his fields.
Those money's coming out of the fund that we've started to build for you.
Yeah.
On the raise and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not for sure where we're at on that, so whether, you know, we have to use the loan or where we're at on.
Well, I got a couple loans.
Well, I mean.
We got the money, yeah.
But I would like to try to get those tires on there ASAP. I've got fields we can go to, I'm hoping they will land the plant to within the next week, to ten days, providing weather, conditions.
Have you got any other?
Wiseman's in the OSHA.
Right there, by me, used to be the Jackson tire there.
Yeah. Oh. But I was trying to find somebody that can come out to the field and put those along, because, yeah, that truck only goes thirty-five miles an hour, so.
Both of these beds, able to either one come out?
Yes, they have, certainly.
Both Firestone tires?
Yes, both same tire.
You like the best?
Where, where are we starting on?
I would go with that, I can't remember what they're called, Talley, was it?
Talley right out here. Yeah, okay.
They're a little bit cheaper.
Try every bit, yeah.
They're closer, yeah, they're low, yeah. Okay, you guys wanna fix him up with some tires right quick?
I mean, it's a shame we wasn't done before, but, so whether we can sell the tires that are on there now, I would try, so. I'm sure we'll look into what we got on that account.
And the depreciation?
Got, you have that, uh, CD in the sewer, I'm at forty.
Forty-five?
Forty-five hundred. I'm at forty-five thousand in that. It was supposed to have been there.
In reserve, isn't it? Or, I don't know.
But it is, it can be for repair and maintenance, that's what you're putting that money back looking for.
But you have to refund it.
Yeah.
I think it's twelve equal payments or something, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a little bit, so no matter what, I think you could bring this back, however it comes.
And you gotta have them paid back.
Yes.
Like, it's hard going along with it right now. You've got bills that, you know, are going to be paying too. But I could probably get this loan thing going for the next week at our best. So.
So we can try it that way.
What about that CD thing? We pay back in so many months.
Forty-five thousand.
Well, I mean, is that what it's for?
They were supposed to have the forty-five thousand dollars CD.
There's three of them.
Can we use that money to do this, I mean, we're, we're sitting here, we got five thousand, we need to spend forty-nine hundred.
We can cash them in.
And then if something falls off tomorrow, we're.
I'll call the bank, tell them directly.
There's three different CDs added to the forty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Having a lot of hopes on dump knows here. I don't like making decisions like that. I know you need it, Victor.
Yeah, all I know is, uh, bring up what my Andy says I need to do and.
And things.
I need to get the tires, get them on there, I'd say we'll be able to dig up five thousand dollars. This is a, like, to me, this is a, uh, take if people get this good tires on their field.
Well, I know, but we're spending money on a sixteen year, his first check, but. I mean.
Well, that's. I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make a move on some of this stuff in good faith, because a lot of these things have to be done, I think, um.
Well, I know they do, but I, I'm just being refreshing, that's how, if we do what we've had, what we're going before these things get brought up.
Before it come up, that'd be a great idea.
And that's part of the idea of that hundred thousand dollar.
All in there, yeah.
But, I'll look at our budgets with the shebatteled budget right now. I don't know, anybody got any views on this, any?
I think we're gonna throw it up and see, because, uh, with the guidance of the tires, this is a, this is a feature here, you're gonna have to.
What happens if next week we have an electric motor burn out, it costs eight grand, didn't want to.
So, yeah, eight grand, we got money, we got money, we know we.
We don't have enough.
That fund that we already talked about, you know, we got another hundred fund, hundred thousand in there, we're not gonna use it at all.
Count on that hundred thousand before we do.
Well, I'm sorry, but we gotta be business.
Exactly, we've gotta have the money to do it, you're sending us on a full surrender, I just, I don't.
You can wait on all this for the next meeting.
We're not, we're gonna, we're gonna get them tires guys to die tonight, if Victor wants them to give away.
I didn't check.
He'd been begging for, uh, to get some work done, generator down there, does he ever able to get enough money to get that generator down?
I'm sure around.
A lot of broad and street, on gas and everything, pay these frigging bills that we oughta have had the money in, because the ball's been dropped for too damn long. Now, we're all paying for it. This hundred thousand dollars, I'm all for it, but let's know we got it before we start spending it. And if we got those CDs, if we got one we can cash in, let's do it, let's spend the money we've got, not spend the money we're hoping the hell we get.
I don't, we just spend some confusion on those CDs, I don't know where, what the heck the deal is with it, so whoever's got it, decide, decide to get it out.
I know, I got it started.
That's us, that's us, as a council, we all need to figure that out, and we.
I'm not sitting up here with a rock and a gun, but, yeah, we're breaking the money.
Like I said, this is nothing to do with you, Victor, this is our own dropping of the ball.
Okay, so I'm gonna bring up on tire, we need to get this done.
Well, we can still, we can still pay for these three, two CDs. We, we've got them in good faith, make, uh, progress, or make advancements in somebody's repair and stuff. I make a motion, I make a motion to buy the two tires from Talley.
Where we gonna look?
Forty-nine hundred, ninety-nine seventy. If we have, first that we have to look at the CDs, if we can't get the money started, uh, from the loan. Either one of the two, we'll.
We can get it out, CD, we have to pay.
And then we need to move forward with repairs.
Yeah, I agree, like I said, I'm good.
Because I'm.
We sit here and we hum and haw around about what we can cash in that CD, or what we can get this loan, and the, the next meeting comes up, what do we cash in that CD? No, do we get a loan? Well, no, that's what we're working on. Well, the beat goes on, and whoever is the.
Mark or the.
Yeah.
In charge of that, let's do it.
Yeah, let's get a second on ours, uh, deal there, we got one?
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor of getting two tires for?
And that's what cashed in the, the CD.
Either way, whatever it takes.
But, but. Yeah, but if the, if the monies that we're trying to get through the loan, uh, comes through, if they can be paid for that way. If not, you still have to have the tires to apply sludge to the field.
Yeah.
And that need to be done ASAP.
Well, I think it's not a question for us to know where we're gonna be standing by now.
It would be great, it would be great to have, have the numbers in advance, yes. But there is a, there is a fund for repairs.
Right, that's what he's been waiting on ever since he's been here, he hasn't got any help down there. To help him do his job, he has to borrow it from the city. And we need a full-time help down there probably now, because he's got a lot of work to do.
I make a motion on the floor.
And a second?
Okay, and a second, all in favor of getting those tires?
Yeah, but I'd like to know where the.
Two and three, uh, oh, were you going, yes or no?
I will call you tomorrow and say we cashed in the CDs or we got the loan.
That's simple enough, that's simple enough, that's what I'd like to know.
Okay, we passed it, we're gonna get you talking.
Get it.
Okay, what else you got, any other?
Uh, not an emergency, but I would like to get it done, uh, a flow totalizer or a flow meter out there. Big thing, DNR, you came in hard time, we need to calibrate that yearly, it hasn't been done since two thousand and eleven. I found a report from back in two thousand and eleven, that when it was total, or when it was calibrated at that time, a flow totalizer was reading inaccurate. So, three or four years of flow records could be wrong. So like I was telling Gene, I think that's pretty important for us to get that corrected, because a lot of the plant designs or upgrades are off of flow records. Well, if the flow records are reading high, maybe we're not getting as much flow, I mean, we know we are getting, you know, peak flows during rainy events, but, uh. I talked to R E Parady, they can come out, calibrate it, hook up my flow totalizer for about fifteen hundred dollars, it would be less. If, you know, if they just get me on the books and that they find another, uh, city that's needing theirs calibrated, they'll split the cost of travel, because they're coming out of, uh, Michigan campus, I think it is. That's what the majority of the cost is, is the, uh.
This will help with our short-term cleanup, well, Victor, this is our part of our short-term program, we'll be able to have.
Well, that's what needs to get done every year.
Yeah, out of here.
That flow meter should be calibrated.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be such a big deal, I don't like the fact that that totalizer may be reading inaccurate. I would, I'd at least be able to get ahold of the company and say, yeah, put me on the books, I'd get a month or two down the line. Where we could, you know, get it in five or six, seven hundred dollars cheaper.
Can we get a motion on that? Do you understand what Victor's saying?
I understand what he's saying, and the payment would be, uh, probably thirty days down the line.
Yeah, if not five months, yeah.
And so, either the, either the, either the CDs or the loan, this is another item that has to be done.
Yes, I mean, no, we don't have to do it, we can just keep going along, the next time DNR comes in here, once you got it done, or you need, yeah, whoever it is, you know, just more to the list of, why aren't you doing?
I make a motion to, uh, have the, uh, flow totalize, uh, totalize, flow totalizer, uh, recalibrated, fixed, uh, in the amount of fifteen hundred.
Like I said, that'd be probably several months down the line, I'd just would like to get it on the books.
We got a second, right? Got a second, okay, all in favor? Right on. Thank you, Victor, what else? Okay, we're still looking for help, right?
Uh, I've got a person that I'd like to hire, so.
Okay.
I've got an application, so.
Okay, you wanna say a little more about that? Uh, we say on tonight. You know, you already got him picked out, and you'd like to have him, right?
Yep.
This is, this is a big thing, yeah.
Or at least till we get, you know, somebody else too, you know, like the temporary, whatever, uh, he's worked with me in the past.
Yeah.
Uh, he can step right in and start helping me.
What's his name?
Keenan Buckley.
You know, here, oh, that's, oh, okay, I want to see if he's swimming on.
And, uh.
Yeah, well, he looks like a strong man. You guys wanna get him checked out, or you wanna just temporarily say something? You got his resume?
I think he's got his application.
Application?
We already approved this money, that.
It's in, yes.
Exactly, in the next budget, if, yeah, I mean.
Well, I put it in at the sewer ring, and hired two part-time people.
And then we okay, hired one in the budget.
The last, the last meeting, or whenever it was, yes, we approved, uh, somebody at nine dollars an hour for two to three days a week.
Now, this isn't no kind of relation.
It's my stepson, that's why I said, until we get somebody else, so I don't know how that affects that too.
Yeah, I'm afraid that's gonna get us back into it.
Well, it wouldn't mean nothing immediately, maybe a little year. It's gonna hard until you get somebody else, or the city don't like it, or they're not beating down on us, you need, you need somebody.
I think the council's gonna hire him here, not Victor, am I right?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, same thing. It doesn't matter what I think. Doesn't matter what my legal opinion is, it was, do what you want.
Amen.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
What was Jared thinking?
So he didn't have one.
He been do that.
I'd like to say.
The thing is, you know, that's, you don't want that to lie again.
It's a plot.
Do that, or I need somebody from Barn down there working with me, three days a week, I, I need something out.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm done, I'm, I'm right there. So whether it puts Jim short up there, but I, I need somebody down there probably.
Will we work out some hours? If enough legislature deals.
It's just, the hours that I'm getting, it's not enough, it takes time to train and, hey, you know, this is what we gotta do, this is what we gotta watch out for, this, you know, it just. That's why I'm saying, I really need somebody full-time out there.
Has, has Jim been sending anybody?
There isn't, I mean, I might get somebody for a couple hours here and there, yeah, that's, you know, I could, you know, I need. Give this a little sense of time, but this ain't getting in, learning what you gotta do, if I'm laid up, or I'm sick, or I wanna take a day off, that's not happening. We're, we're running the plant short, you know, I'm not coming in every day. You know, I try to mix up the weekend a little bit, you know, take off a little bit during the week, and then come in on the weekend and stuff, but, uh, it needs to be done immediately, you know, there's a hot, hotbed out there.
And we only got twenty-something days left on our first program.
Been here every five months now. Uh, it, you know, it's well past it.
Oh, I know, I know. I'll try to get out for you, Alex Crowder, and I don't have any.
Was it wages?
It's ages, and, and trying to find somebody part-time for two days, three days is, is a little rough.
Do you think it gets easier to put full-time now?
Well, yeah, and, and the need's there anyway, I mean, you probably talked to Gene too, there's a lot to do. I, I'm trapped out there at that sewer plant, just trying to do the bare minimum things that's required by the state, that's not giving me time to get out, do maintenance, start doing.
Do you think, do you think we need to make adjustments to what are, what we're looking for?
I do. Well, that's why I said, give me somebody right now, until this process can work out, because it takes time.
Uh, sorry, who, who got their hand?
It's a ma'am.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't know if this is an option, but Crowder, that has a wastewater treatment. Yep. Who did call them? Okay, I was, that's what I was gonna say, I mean, has that been, you know, an option?
I called them at least five times, and they've never got a answer, but I did get answered from one of the people's husbands. And, um, I don't know what it was about, but I had a conversation that's about it, so they realized, oh, that we do need help.
Okay, I, I just, I didn't know if it had been looking to.
If we make adjustments to, from part-time to full-time, would that help? Yeah, could the application process?
I think to, for what you're gonna need and what you want, you know, person, if you owe it a nine dollars an hour, you may have a lot of people, good, good people turning you down, they have to feed their family.
Yeah. You know, I mean, that's, it'll take more discussion, more work, but I, I just need somebody, somebody that's gonna stay with me for a while, listen, and learn, and just. So I can take a little time off if I want it, and, uh.
I know what you, I know what you mean, because I'm gonna have to.
We need to get it done, I'll just try and find somebody.
Or, or if you would, uh, I mean, you've used common maintenance in the past, you know, when you first hired me, uh, you're just hiring an entity, uh, we could do something like that.
While we got the application process out.
You're just hiring an entity, not a, not a person, so. You know, I can do that, I've got several people, you know, still working with me that I can bring in that have worked at this plant before, you know, that's also, you know, an idea also, so.
Anybody know how that works?
I don't, but.
Well, it's, yeah, you're not contract labor, yeah, just contract labor.
Oh, contract labor, okay, yeah, no. So, that could work, would that work, lawyer?
Yes.
Okay, how, what are we gonna do? Get him in here?
Well, we just need to know what it's gonna cost.
We got, we got, I'm not. We got, we got, I'm not trying to be, you know, just conversation at all.
But I think, you know, I'll be paying the taxes and all that, so I would say at a rate of like fifteen dollars an hour, something like that. I take care of all the taxes.
If we're going to do that, and I know you need somebody right now, but we took that short-term for next, hire somebody. If we're going to do that, we need to have somebody that's going to hang in.
Well, that's what I was going to, you know, as a short-term type, just give me somebody right now, you know, we just, we just... Find us out whatever we need to sign labor-wise as far as, uh, uh, work comp, all that, you know, so... Then give me somebody immediately until we can either decide we're going to go with full-time or a couple of part-times or whatever, you know, with some work sessions.
Probably going to be whatever's the easiest to get in there, whatever, what's the best way to fill that position, two part-time or one employee.
Well, I think it would be best for the city to hire another full-time person in case I decide I want to go somewhere else. Uh, you know, all along we'll be training somebody else to replace me. And vacation too. Well, vacation, whatever. I mean, you know, I may decide, hey, I don't want to stay here. Uh, I want to go somewhere else. So you really want to have somebody lined up and been working at it for a while, so, uh, that's where these part-time people are going to come and go. It's going to be rough. And Gene can tell you that there's a lot of projects to do. And you can hold me accountable. I'll have a list of things we'll do and they'll get done. And I expect you guys to come out and check up on us. You guys start coming up with it, so, always. But I would like to do something like that. Cause, you know, I was afraid of the, you know, the, the nepotism. I understand that definitely.
Well, we can do that. And these guys want to, uh... When do we start?
I'm ready now. I mean, if you guys are ready, just a flat fee of fifteen dollars an hour, if we have any discretion, we'll get them out. I've got them up. I'm not seeing any progress or whatever. And, uh, the council, however, want to do it. But I want somebody, I want somebody.
And you want a full-time right now?
No, I just, part-time.
Oh, part-time.
Just on a call basis or whatever.
Contract based.
Oh, contract based.
Until we can get...
A full-time employee.
Full-time or, or something like that, so...
I'm making a motion left, Victor. Contract labor. For assistance part-time until we can fill a full-time position. Yeah, I mean, that's what it's going to cost us and...
Up to, up to twenty hours?
Oh, up to, how many hours you thinking?
I'm thinking at least three days a week.
Twenty-four hours. Okay, how's that?
You're asking after the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, could you do that? I mean, could you do that? Could you do that?
I think he's already made the...
Oh, he, oh, he made that.
Twenty-four hours if that helps.
Okay, uh, okay. We got a second on that?
I'll say.
Okay, all those in favor?
I'm just scared of the negatives we're dealing with.
Okay, well, that, he didn't get on.
Contract labor.
It's a contract. Uh, but we got a, we got a...
Well, yes, it would affect it if it's, but you, the question you asked me was, uh, whether you could have an entity do it. And an entity can do it, but it, you know, it can't be a sole member, you know, type of an entity that happens to be related to you. So that's, that's a...
I'm the sole proprietor of an LLC company.
Sure, well, and you're the employer of the city of Granby, so if you're hired... What's that?
That does mix it up.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, you can't, you can't hire somebody that's related to you.
Well, you're not. You're, you're hire, hiring a limited liability company, but, but, I don't know, so...
But you're the proprietor.
Yes.
Well, you're, you're saying you're going to hire yourself as the, as a contract laborer?
No, no. I'm just, you know.
I have an idea. It's the same situation.
So keep that one. You're going fifty-nine an hour. Twenty, twenty-four hour a week. And that's what we approved, I guess. Have we approved it all? Two to none anyway. Bill, you want to know, go ahead and go.
Is there anybody else that you think we need?
Okay, we got it too.
Well, we're trapped in my, we're just stuck.
But if we can approach Tara with, with a better package.
Yeah, but still, I'm just still left here. You know, that's why I'm asking, give me some relief help. If Jim can get by with, you know, one person the last three days a week.
Let's make that, let's make that work for now.
I know it's going to get him short, but, well, I'm so good. I'm getting down there on my...
So what, we just approved, they approved?
He just retracted.
Yeah, it's just too cloudy, so...
Let's try Jim to give somebody.
Yeah, I just need him dedicated. I would prefer the same person each time. Cause I, you know, I've been getting different people every time and you can't just, you can't teach, you know, everybody.
You want some dedicated hour, two certain hours, you don't can figure out what he needs.
I'll try to work with him.
Yeah.
We want to revisit these application processes.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Say, ten dollar an hour man.
Either that or we, we need to, yeah, kind of look and see what we're going to reduce, so...
Sold. It'd be a little bit more attractive to, yeah, somebody in.
There's a couple of people I've worked with before, but they're not going to come in at ten dollars an hour. I mean, they might at twelve, but you don't want to ask.
Why don't we do this? Why don't you, we can come up with part-time, somebody that would work, uh, get filled for money. Well, we're going to have to see how we're going to make it work. But for now, we'll have to get somebody. Bill, what are you doing three days a week?
I like to do it, yeah.
Give up a little that time.
Okay, thank you, Victor. Okay, we got ordinance seven eighty-six amended, amend, uh, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget.
Bill number seven eighty-six, ordinance number seven eighty-six, an ordinance to amend the annual budget for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Incorporating funds pursuant thereto, whereas Granby City Court is presenting the Granby Board of Alderman, the amended annual budget for the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And now, the order being ordained by the Granby Board of Alderman of the City of Granby, Missouri, as follows, section one, the amended annual budget of the City of Granby, Missouri, for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, copy of which is attached hereto, and made a part hereof as a fully set forth herein. Having seen thereto for submitted by the Granby City Court this hereby adopted. Section two, funds are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes of expenditures set forth to be said amended budget. Section two, this format shall be in full force from effective from and after passage by the Granby Board of Alderman.
Got a question. Since, since I was just going over on this audit thing, when are we going to have to do this again?
At the end of the year, um, it basically gives expenditures, income expenditures.
I don't know what it is.
You wrote out. Or do you want to just throw this aside and do it again? This is basically for all the salaries that you put.
I don't know where's changing, chasing ghost numbers around.
Next.
Uh, okay, we don't have to read the ordinance there on the field. Okay. Uh, set date for citywide rummage sale and citywide?
We had a million and two phone calls, help with sharing.
Yes.
Kayla. Last year, a rummage sale was April the eleventh and the twelfth, and our cleanup was May the thirtieth and thirty-first. Her rabies clinic is going to be April the eleventh, it's Saturday. Do you know if we want to have the rummage sale that weekend or not?
The input that I've had, and I don't know, you guys probably got a lot more of it, is the, um, rummage sale was a little urban.
Okay.
Uh, some people like, like to see it in May.
Okay.
Is there any suggestion?
Mother's Day is May the tenth. That's on a Sunday.
I would say, I would say May fifteenth, sixteenth, or May twenty-second, twenty-third.
Oh, last. Where, where do the other cities have their citywide run-ins where it would be quite so, you know, complicated for other cities?
I'm not sure on, on Neosho or not.
Neosho's is the seventeenth and eighteenth of April.
Are you thinking about May fifteenth?
That's Friday, Saturday.
Oh, Friday and Saturday, what, May fifteenth, sixteenth? Oh, May, that's a different month, yeah. May, May fifteenth, not April. That's Neosho, seventeenth, thirteenth?
Uh, Neosho's is April, seventeenth and eighteenth, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know.
Would there be a problem with going into first part of June?
After Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah, after the Memorial, after the holidays.
You mean clean up more of...
Well, both of them. You usually have the cleanup after, if the... Rummage sale first, you need to clean up.
Week later, get some time to...
Yeah, but you've been waiting two weeks. You'd have Memorial Day weekend and whatever, a couple of weeks. So they had like the rummage sale fifteenth and sixteenth, and the cleanup the fifth and sixth of June.
Fifth and sixth of June. How many loves that?
Cause then that'd give you a couple of weeks to figure out if you really want to get rid of it, or you might buy more stuff.
Yeah, where you'll buy some more.
The rummage sale, uh, May the fifteenth and sixteenth?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then like the cleanup on the fifth and sixth of June.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to have a rummage sale May fifteenth, sixteenth. And the citywide cleanup, June the fifteenth, sixth.
Oh, second June. I got a second. Okay, all over the paper? Two there. You got one, you have one? Three, okay, we got a few. Okay, how about number eight there?
That's just why I about Sharon's rabies clinic.
Okay, April eleventh, nine AM and, uh, twelve PM at the Granby Forest Station, rabies shots, nine mo, combo, eleven. Off the U K, seven, well, the ministry of the vaccine. Everybody get that, that one?
Get a order of fries with it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I, yeah, we want to go in there.
Is that a supersize it?
Okay, we're going to be gone, uh...
Hang on.
Good.
I make a motion to go in closed session in accordance with R S M O six one zero point zero two one one. Possible litigation and R S M O six one zero point zero two one three, requesting hiring, firing, and discipline personnel.
Ah, sorry.
Travis?
Here.
No, yes. Jill?
Yes.
Iris?
Yes.
No decisions were made at this time.
Most of the jury.
I think more took on than that, didn't it? An hour.
Sorry.
All over the paper?
Thank you. Ten oh five?
Uh, yeah, more or less two back there.
No decisions were made at this time.
Most of the jury.
I think more took on than that, didn't it? An hour.
Sorry.
No.
All over the paper?
Thank you.